Good evening. It is Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. We are meeting at the Lunenburg Middle School Collaborative Room, D132. In accordance with the requirements of the Open Meeting Law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live. It is not being broadcast live. It will be broadcast later over the Lunenburg Public Access Facebook and their cable channel. It will also be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. If you wish to join this meeting, the ID number is 7663167607. The agenda lists all topics which may be discussed at the meeting and those that are reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by Open Meeting Law. So I would like anyone who is able to rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business is public comment. Is there anyone on the committee that wishes to make a public comment? Mr. Skolnbrini?
So my public comment has to do with what Mr. Plant asked us last time. And he asked us a question about equity. And before I was a lawyer and was a philosophy graduate student, and so that question got me thinking about what I think of when I think of equity. And it pointed to two things. First, there was a discussion between the ancient Greek philosophers and the modern philosophers about what makes a good society? And they focused on two things: equality and fairness. And I think that equity is when you blend equality and fairness. The problem is that doesn't really tell you like what it, how to recognize equity. So the second thing that I thought of, and I think this is germane to the public school setting more than the high-minded ideas of Aristotle, is what John Rawls calls "the veil of ignorance." And he talks about this in his book, Theory of Justice, which was published in the 70s. And in his book, he had this thought experiment where he basically said, "A society that truly embraces justice," which I think is synonymous or close to synonymous with equity, "is one where if you didn't know your standing in life, if you didn't know you were rich or poor, you didn't know what race you would be, you didn't know whether you would be born, you know, fully able or handicapped, would you still agree to be part of that society?" In other words, if all those things were randomly distributed and you could have, you know, the fortunes of being Bill Gates' son, or you could be born, you know, blind, would you still agree to join that society?
Maybe leave and then we join.
And so I think that for purposes of the discussion we had around equity and the equity audit, I think that's, that's the thing that helps me figure out whether or not we're making decisions focused on student achievement that take equity into consideration. We don't make decisions based on any one student or any one class or any one teacher. We don't get to know those things because we entrust that management to Dr. Burnham and other people in the administration. But we're sort of in this position of saying like, what would the policy be? And so when he asked me like, what is equity? For me, equity is making policies not knowing which students are going to come before us, whether they, you know, are reading two grade levels ahead or two grade levels below. But making policies such that everyone has a, has a good shot and everyone, even if you don't know who you're making the rules for, will be treated correctly. And so, you know, I think that the illustration that we had two presentations ago about equity where it had the little apple boxes that they were standing on, I think that was an illustration and probably not a definition. But I think that like, if we're talking about making policies, we have to aim for rules that would make it such that anybody would want to join. You wouldn't feel as though it's automatically unfair or it's automatically broken. And I think this goes, the last thing I'm going to say is, this goes to something that Peter has been very mindful of and has reminded us of. That, you know, there are kids in our school district who need more help than others. There are kids in our school district, like we were crafting the transportation policy. Peter reminded us to put something in there so that the school district knew that these kids may not get the information that we would reach out with them. And I think if we can make it such that it's fair for those kids and it's, if there's equity for those kids, then I think that we're doing the right thing. And so like, the definition and the way to check whether or not you're meeting that definition are tied up with those two ideas of being placed without knowing what your advantages are and then checking in to see how the most disadvantaged in the school district are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Skolnbrini. Is there anyone else on the committee that has a public comment? Mr. Beadmore?
Um, so first of all, thank you for your commentary and I food for thought for me and I don't have time to really put that through the meat grinder tonight, but I probably will in a couple of weeks when we meet again. But I did want to congratulate the staff and faculty for a successful school year. I attended the eighth grade graduation this morning and it was very well done and very thoughtful. And I think all of the kids came away very proud of their achievements over the course of the last three years in the middle school and looking forward to whatever's next for them either here or in another institution. And I think that was a really good class and, and they, they really showed themselves well, as did the entire faculty and administration, not only here in the middle school, but throughout the school system. And I think we've seen some of the initial results that we'll talk about later today. But I'm really excited. I'm really happy for the successful year we've had and I'm looking forward to what we can do next.
Thank you. Mrs. Prusowski?
Yep, you got it. Um, yeah, I wanted to say thank you. Happy last day at school. And thank you to all the staff and administrators for getting us through a good school year and keeping the kids educated and safe and healthy. And thank you very much.
All right. Okay, are there any public comments then from the public? If you are on the Zoom option, you may raise your hand. I see Mr. Plant or Mrs. Plant. Someone's hand is up there. Go right ahead.
Good evening.
You name an address first, please.
Yes, Lisa Plant, 490 Lancaster Ave, Lunenburg, Massachusetts. So first, we wanted to say we were shocked to win the lunch with the superintendent at the PTO fundraiser. And while we were thinking that it would be one of us that got to attend the lunch, did I say dinner? I meant lunch. I wanted to say that our son and his two friends that got to join him had a great time. And we really appreciate that and thank you for that. So thank you, Dr. Burnham. With respect to Mr. Skolnbrini's comments, we too agree that everyone should be provided with equal opportunity. What we don't agree with is equal outcomes. And based on the definition that was previously provided with the illustration on equity, that's exactly what happened. Everyone had an equal outcome. They were all at the same level. So that's all we wanted to say and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much and I'm glad your son enjoyed his prize.
I, I will offer that, um, the staff at TCP also very much enjoyed the lunch with, with three students from Turkey Hill Elementary. Mr. Palumbo walked the students up and joined us for lunch as well. And it was probably the best time I've had in, in some time. It was a wonderfully entertaining lunch, so thank you to the kids for, for joining. It was a good day.
Cool.
All righty. Anyone else with a public comment? I'm not seeing any other hands raised and I'm going to assume we don't have any others.
Oh, can I? Sorry.
All right.
I forgot. I wanted to say thank you to the PTO for putting on a fun time at Hollis Hills for the fundraiser. We went, we had a great time. It rained. But up until that, it was great. It was, yeah, the weather did not cooperate, but it was really fun. It was really well-run. It was really well-put together. My daughter stood in line a lot for prizes. And the raffle baskets were great. It was just a really wonderful time. So thank you for all the hard work that went into that.
Well, thank you for mentioning that. That's terrific. Sorry, it rained. It's been that kind of spring. And I don't think it's going to get better immediately, so there we go. So we'll move on to the Chair's report. I'd like to take this opportunity to wish all the students, families and staff a very happy, relaxing, safe and well-deserved summer vacation. You've all worked hard this year and thank you for everyone that helped in a successful school year. And to people who are listening, happy longest day of the year and thank you for spending it with us. So my other comment would be to please take a few minutes to look at the front page of the town website where you will find the master plan kickoff section. If you click under that, "Read More," you will find a QR code in the flyer that will lead you to a survey to help determine the direction the townspeople would like the committee to follow as the town grows. This is a very important survey. Now, for people that don't like QR codes, they're working on getting a regular normal link, but I'm not sure it's up there yet. If the QR code is bothersome to you, as it often is to me, then stop at the town hall and get a paper copy because this is very important. It will guide the committee, the committee in their idea of where to go as the town grows, which it is. The, um, the one thing, this is jumping ahead of committee reports, but anyhow, the one thing that I will say is at that meeting, they did talk about how Lunenburg is the third fastest-growing city town in the Commonwealth over the last 10 years. So it's a growing, so. So that's what I have for Chair Report. And we have to review and approve minutes, regular session, April 3rd and then, uh, April, May 3rd, I guess I'm on vacation. May 3rd and then regular session, May 24th. I will say I didn't see the May 24th ones till I sat down just now. Have, have other people seen them? Because if everybody else has seen them and are fine with them, then that's fine.
I have only seen the May 3rd.
So we can wait and approve those at the next meeting. I didn't have a chance to look at them. So let's just look at May 3rd for this evening, but thank you for getting the 24th in there. Are there any questions on the May 3rd minutes?
Yep.
Then could I have a motion to approve them?
Make a motion to approve the May 3rd minutes.
A second.
All those in favor? I opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
All righty. Okay, and then we'll look at the 24th the next time. Because there's a lot of committee assignments in there and I tried to look quick, but I'd rather look slower. So, okay, we do not have any line item transfers, I believe.
That is correct.
All right, so we're on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'll start with an update relative to our IT department. Starting July 1st, we will be utilizing the services of custom computer specialists. They'll support the district in an IT director function and work with the administration to closely examine the district's growing technology needs. They are already currently onsite working with SOZR IT in the transition from SOZR IT to them, so. So far, we've been quite happy. Transportation. After reviewing transportation forms submitted to date, we have verified requests for bus transportation for 1,518 students. So that's the number minus any duplicate submissions. District-wide, we have not received a transportation form for only 27 currently enrolled students. Those students are 19 at the high school, four at the middle school, four at Turkey Hill Elementary, and there are zero outstanding transportation forms at the primary school. We'll stick with the primary school. Currently, our registrations for kindergarten, we are at 104 students as of today. Special education extended school year, that's the summer school for eligible special education students. Thirty-three of the 48 students recommended for our special education extended school year program have accepted and will be attending. Again, I'll remind you that teachers from grades K through eight will be voluntarily participating in curriculum work this summer. Teachers in grades six through eight will be reviewing the new curriculum materials for ELA and mapping out the first two to three units of this new curriculum for implementation in the fall. Teachers grades K through five will use their experience from year one of implementation of the HMH Math and Literacy Curriculum to revise scope, sequence, pacing, and to identify what HMH curriculum materials will be core to each grade-level curriculum. In other words, they will identify the must-dos for every classroom and the optional can-do materials for every classroom. Summer hours at schools this summer will be transitioning to our summer hours beginning next week. Year-round staff will work slightly longer days Monday through Thursday and half-day remotely on Friday, as we've done last year. And as we've done the last few years, we will be posting summer office hours at each school. Those hours will be 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Monday through Thursday. During these hours, families can schedule appointments to come in and conduct any necessary business at the school, work permits, registrations, those, those types of things. Having a designated time every day to interface with the public is very helpful because it allows the secretaries a little bit of time in the morning or in the afternoon to attend trainings that might be scheduled or to attend district or school-level meetings without inconveniencing the public. Master plan was mentioned earlier and I will just let you know that our high school students were asked to partake in the survey and they did participate in the survey last week. It was reported that they did see quite an uptick in the number of surveys that were completed, so. First, thank you for offering to have the students lend their voice through the survey. And thank you to all the students for providing some very important feedback. The only June reminders we have left, we have a final school committee meeting on the 29th. It is off-cycle. It is on a Thursday. That meeting will be via Zoom and that is primarily for the school committee to review any POs that need to remain open and be carried over beyond the June 30th fiscal year end. We try to schedule this meeting as late in June as we can so that the team at TCP can close out and pay out as many invoices as possible, making that list of carryover items much smaller. And I too would like to end by saying a special thank you to all the students, families and staff for a good year. I hope everybody enjoys the summer break and have a happy, happy summer and stay safe and well. And I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Thank you very much. So just one question. So the people, the 100, 1,518 verified riders, have those parents been told they're absolutely okay? Or is there no need to do that because the things came in on time?
They came in on time.
So everybody can relax, those people, those 1,518 kids are on the bus.
So what we're doing currently, and we did outline this timeline in the procedure that we shared, we handed off the verified list to DBUS. They're working to assign students to specific bus routes. Once we get that back, that's when our school secretaries will enter the bus assignment in Power School. And the deadline that we've set is the end of that first week in August so that the next week, the first real full week in August, we will be able to send a school messenger out specific to each bus. So in other words, all of the kids who have been assigned to bus route four, we can pull them up in Power School and send a message through school messenger that says, "Your child has been assigned to bus route four." And we'll let them know where and when to be looking for bus routes to be posted with stops, bus stops, et cetera. And we will be able to provide that individualized notification of which bus you're assigned to that first full week in August. And we're on track.
Terrific.
All right, yes. Um, should we use that capability later in the school year? Like when a bus is running late, so we can text only the ones whose bus is running late? Okay.
There were some challenges in the first maybe two weeks of school this past year because we had so many at the end that we didn't have all the numbers in Power School because they were coming in right up until school opened. But we do have that capability. And that's why it's very important that we have that all input prior to the opening of school because the first few days of school, maybe even into the second week, people are still getting used to bus stops, so on, so forth. The kindergartners, it's a longer goodbye at the bus stop the first day or two. So it's sort of, the route can get a little bit off timing. But when we know that we're running a fair amount late or, or if they get off leaving the school at the end of the day significantly behind schedule, we do send out a communication as to which bus and how, how long to anticipate the delay.
And it's bus-specific? Okay. And for the 27 missing forms, have we reached out?
Yes.
To the families?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, we don't have a student representative, I believe. Our students are put loose and fancy-free. So we will move on to new business, the FY24 School Handbooks.
So this evening, all of the principals are here to answer any questions you may have about the handbooks. Any changes in each of the handbooks has been highlighted in yellow. I'll acknowledge that we recognize that there are some formatting challenges and some edits, typos, that kind of a thing that once the content is approved before these are posted publicly, Liz Peterson at my office goes through, make sure that they're all formatted correctly and edits for typos, et cetera.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions about any of the handbooks? I have a few. Okay, go ahead.
On the high school handbook, it lists under school committee members. It lists me as the secretary for school committee, which I'm not.
Mrs. Peterson will catch that.
Okay, good. Um, okay, hold on, this one's just a typo. Oh, so it says under free reduced for food service and cafeteria, it says under free reduced application, "It is important for all families to complete a meal benefit application as it allows us to establish eligibility for P EBT wave or reduce school-related fees associated with athletics, field trips, activities, AP exams and others." As far as filling out that form, that's a pretty onerous form to fill out. Are we asking all families in Lunenburg to try to fill out? Because if I remember correctly, it was a Google form. And when I started filling it out this year, I had concerns about the privacy because it was asking for financial information about my family and it was just a Google form. And I had some reservations about sending that information in a Google form to I-don't-know-where because when you fill out those forms, I don't know where the information goes.
Right.
So are we asking every family in the district to send in their?
We're encouraging every family to do it because sometimes people are actually eligible and they don't always recognize that they're eligible. And it was important, and this was something that was picked up in the equity audit, to make sure to include, while we did send that information in a letter out to families last fall, we did include the other elements. It's not just to be deemed eligible for free and reduced lunch. If you meet that threshold, you're also then eligible for reduced fees, as an example. We talked about field trips and potential reduction in cost for, you know, families that, that might qualify. So this is one of those data points that, that we can use for those things. I would say that anybody who is concerned about sharing the information can contact Nadine Lorenzen, who is our food service director, directly. That information, I, I will say for everyone, I don't see those forms. There are two people in the district who you, the food service director and I believe it is the CAF manager at the school sees just those students at that school. So in its information that is held very confidential and it doesn't leave Nadine's office.
Okay.
They review documents in her office.
Okay, ask them for the public because we went through this last year, you and me, when, yeah, when I filled this out. Okay.
Okay. And honestly, people, if they have any concerns, absolutely reach out.
Okay. And then there was a part that said, under detentions, it said possession of games, water pistols, look-alike toy weapons. Don't specify what games means.
I think that that was left general because games can evolve.
Okay.
We, I will say that we had our attorney review that language a year ago.
Okay. And then I had a question about the primary handbook where we crossed out the reminder to all parents about it is against the law to pass school buses while lights are flashing. Why do we take that out?
Mr. Adams, are you on the call?
Yes.
Did you hear that question?
I did. It was in two places.
Okay. That's a really good answer.
Yeah, there was a lot of redundant information in our handbook, so you'll see a lot of yellow that's being taken out.
Okay, yeah, I saw some of the redundancy, but I just didn't see that one and that's, okay. That answers all my questions.
Thank you. Anybody else with a question about the handbook? Mr. Skolnbrini?
So I noticed that the rosters haven't been updated. Mr. White is still listed and that one wasn't in yellow, but that was the only change.
Yeah, and there might be some other staffing changes, so before they are posted, we will update those. And if something is left as to be determined, we can always add that and repost it later so that we'll have updated and accurate contact information.
Anyone else? I'd like to commend the principals on adding a welcoming portion at the beginning of each handbook so it's not quite as dry and, and it changes the mood a little bit of the handbook and I appreciate that.
That was also one of the recommendations from the Equity Audit.
Yes, I remember that. So thank you very much for doing that. Otherwise, then we all said to approve these handbooks. Then could I have a motion from someone to approve the FY24? Then could I have a motion from someone to approve the FY twenty four school handbooks?
Make a motion to approve the handbook.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Now the school committee calendar.
So before you, you have a a draft, um, largely sticking to the first and third Wednesday of um, each month. Um, we, we have been meeting at six thirty, uh, so I did make that change at the the top header. Um, we can certainly return to a seven o'clock start if that is the preferred, but seems to me that the six thirty start has been working well.
Working. Is there anyone with the preference to do anything different? We seem okay.
Um, we always include the um annual town meeting in this calendar. We also include the uh, town election date on this calendar. Um, and there are a few meeting dates that are off cycle. So they're not falling on the first or the third Wednesday. Those typically are because of the school vacation weeks, because that typically oftentimes is the third Wednesday. Um, so after consulting um, with the chair, um, we moved the second February meeting to the end of February, because typically by the end of February is when we're getting information about health insurance increased costs. So to delay that meeting so that we have an update at that time, I thought made sense. Um, the April tenth date is the week before the April vacation week, so we would have two consecutive meetings. But that was also intentional because at that point, um, you'll be gathering and I'll be providing um, additional uh, information relative to goals. Because you will then have to uh, embark on the process of writing an evaluation. So I thought having those meetings early and allowing you a couple of weeks to, you know, kind of uh, put together your thoughts on on the uh the composite would would be beneficial to the group. Um, obviously, the May twenty second date is off cycle because we always delay that meeting until after town election. And the June twenty sixth meeting is off cycle because the third uh, Wednesday of June is Juneteenth, which is a holiday. Um, but by moving the the second meeting to that last week in June, we'll be able to address the open carryover POs uh, at that meeting. And any of the topics that you see listed here, they are not etched in stone. This follows a typical pattern of when we typically discuss these topics. Uh, they're pretty standard annual topics. So they are here, but please be aware um, that for any number of reasons, we may need to bump it uh, back or pull it forward to make space on an agenda for other things, so. All of these are tentative.
Any comments on any of that? All right, then we need to approve the um, school committee calendar for the twenty three, twenty four school year. All right, in a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Okay, we should be all set now. So moving on, we have some discussion items, and the first is the assessment report. We have been looking forward to this to see how everything has been working out.
So this evening, uh, we have um, Mrs. Scott, who is our Director of Teaching and Learning, and um, Ms. Resnick, who is our math specialist. Um, and they will uh, go through this slide presentation with you uh, to give you an overview of um the early look at and analysis of our uh, iReady data. Uh, Mrs. Scott, are you able to screen share?
Yes, I will. Hello? Oh, it says disabled.
Right now.
All right. So hello, everyone. My name is Yanica Scott. I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning. And I'm joined by Amy Resnick, our math specialist tonight. She's gonna jump on a few slides. Um, we are presenting the spring assessment report and um, some other curriculum information pertinent to this time. We're gonna start with some um, iReady Spring twenty twenty three district and building level math data. Um, I'm gonna let Amy go through these slides and show you how um, how we're doing as of the spring twenty twenty three in math. I'll I'll go into the reading following. And then Amy's also gonna explain how we analyze this data at the district level, at the building level, um, going into you know, the teacher level and then the student level. So I will let Amy take it away.
Hey, thank you. Um, in looking at this data, you know, we always start at the highest level and looking at the district's level, tracking it over the last three years, we are seeing an increase in our students' early, mid, or above grade level over the last few years. Um, slight decrease in our students' two or three levels below. So we're seeing a positive trend uh, district-wide. Then what, you know, we like to do after that is look at it by each school and look over the last three years at each building, because each building has its own um, its own unique focus. So in looking at the primary school, we are seeing, you know, between last year and this year, only slight variations, pretty similar results. Um, and I think that it was the first year of implementing the new curriculum for math as well as a schedule dedicating sixty minutes to math as well as that intervention block for um, extra student support and our MTSS system. So I think that as we move forward with that and teachers get more comfortable with the curriculum, students get more comfortable with the routines of the curriculum, I'm anticipating seeing this number continuing to increase. One thing that we're focusing on in the primary school for next year is prioritizing this notion of subitizing of working with students at the very youngest grade levels in strengthening the math module in their brains to hopefully avoid some other learning issues and and gaps later on in math. And, Anika, do you want to talk about this particular slide?
Sure. So this is something we set up to kind of, we're we're gonna look um, at this data in two ways. This is looking at the grade level. So this year in math, we had eighty one percent of students on or above grade level in math in kindergarten, first grade, eighty three percent, and so on and so forth, as you as you see in the the column in yellow. Um, we have a two-year goal adopted by the district to get eighty percent of students on or above grade level by the end of next year. But of course, you know, the first grade teachers have one cohort of students this year, and then they're gonna have a new cohort next year, but they'll be inheriting the kindergarten cohort, which currently is at eighty one percent in math. Certainly, year to year, math changes, kids develop. Um, there are, there are all kinds of factors that impact achievement. But we are, we're making a point to track, okay, across, I'm gonna take first grade. So first grade was at eighty three percent on or above grade level as of the spring. We looked at the percent change from winter. That grade level was up twenty seven percent from winter, which is awesome. Uh, they were up eleven percent from last spring wi- with the first grade. So those are our current second graders. Shortly, Amy's gonna show you a look at the cohort, um, where, how we're tracking, you know, where the same group of kids goes. So you see the plus eleven is the change from last spring. You see the plus twenty six is the change from spring twenty twenty one, and then um, the actual cohort, it was down two percent. I do want to point out, the cohort isn't exactly, it it doesn't um stay stagnant year to year because kids move out and move in. So we need to take that into consideration too. But as you look down the the third column over with all the percent changes, you'll see that it's mostly black. So anything negative, I put in the red. Uh, we're moving in the right direction in math. So that's great to see. And certainly, as you move, you know, I want to note that kindergarten and first grade are the only two grade levels that have not had an interrupted education from COVID, because the second graders had a hybrid kindergarten year, which is, you know, which was a, a rock to their foundational skills. So we're still working on closing those gaps and moving forward with our new curriculum.
Um, I, I have a question here. Would that be all right?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Bidmore?
Thank you. Um, I forgive me, I know this is probably obvious, but I I'm gonna ask it just because this is super important and I want to be as explicit as possible.
Sure.
When you talk about a cohort versus percent on or above grade level, in can you explain the difference between? I wish these columns had numbers, but you know, the the fourth through sixth column versus the seventh through uh, ninth column. Um, when we're talking about cohorts versus, I'm just, wh- where are we talking about same students?
Okay, so if I'm looking at grade two, um I am in this chart. I am not looking at the same students. Okay, I am looking at the same students from the spring and back to this winter. I'm looking at the grade two students who are now in grade three when I'm looking at spring twenty twenty two. So this chart originally shows you where second grade has been year to year. Until you get to the cohort percent on or above grade level, one, two, three, four, seven columns over. And you can see that in second grade, um, that was, you see the number seventy two? That means those kids, when they were in first grade, seventy two percent of them were on or above. And if you look at the first grade column from spring twenty twenty two, you'll see that seventy two percent on or above. Um, this is the first path that looking, because again, we want to look at where second grade is bringing kids. But then in a minute, Amy's gonna show you slides that show, okay, we also want, and this has one column that does so. We also want to look at where our cohorts of kids are moving. So when those second graders move on to third grade, how are they doing? It's a different group of teachers. But then, of course, we need to keep track, okay, if seven, if if there's a particular grade level, say seventh, that me, that continues to um you know, be a lower percentage on or above, or a higher percentage red, which is two or more grade levels below, we're concerned with that as well. So we're following the cohort of students, grade level to grade level, and we're looking at where teachers in each grade level are bringing kids each year. But we're also taking in into consideration where that cohort of students was the year before, that they're so-called inheriting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes complete sense, and I understand the importance of all of these numbers, particularly as you're tracking throughout the school year, looking at the effectiveness of teachers, like all of it. Um, I I am struck by the negative twelve in the second grade, the plus ten in the third grade, and the negative twelve in the fourth grade. I, in in my mind, like, those, those are where the alarms are, are going off.
And I'll just um, uh, offer this thought too. Those are numbers that are concerning to us, you know, to be up or down one or two or three points is not like whoa, we have to take a look at this. Double digits like that, that's something that we need to dive into. And I think in a few minutes, um, as we move through the slides, you'll see the ways in which we are diving in to figure out, okay, what's at the root of that number? Is there an outlier that skewed the data? Is this consistent across classrooms at this grade level? So we're really diving down to to try to understand what's going on there.
All right, and I, again, I kind of knew where you were going here, but I just I think it's important when we're having this conversation that it's not all just
Yep.
getting the numbers, but actually digesting and understanding what they mean.
One hundred percent, and we're not sharing actual teacher data tonight, but you can be assured that the the charts below this one that we are taking a look at have the the teacher data level. Um, for example, if I'm a teacher on a team of three at the middle school or at Turkey Hill, I have three home rooms worth of data, and we definitely see, you know, you might have a teacher with a hundred percent of kids on grade level, or, you know, between eighty and a hundred, and then their other two classes are not that high. So we're, we're not only looking at, these are high-level, grade-level averages. Um I can talk to one teacher about, why do you think you had eighty-something percent of kids in this class on or above grade level? And then this other class, you know, might be in the forties. So we're, we're working through those um, issues as well. Sometimes it's easier to explain, and sometimes it isn't. Um, you know, we're, we're we're gleaning different information from that, that we can use to adjust practice moving forward.
Right, and there's other contextual information, like as an example, a class may have had um a long-term substitute for three months out of the year, and that may impact the overall uh, achievement of a given class. So there is that contextual information that also we need to be looking at to help make sense of the numbers.
Yep.
So I'm gonna let Amy take that go for these. This is following the cohort data. Go ahead.
Right, and and honestly, the narrative of the classes are very important. The narratives are really important because we can look at numbers all day and we can make all kinds of assumptions based on the numbers. But it is about tracking those numbers over time to look for patterns and then hearing the the different narratives. So this is kind of like what Anika was showing on the last slide in terms of tracking a cohort. So this year, what you see for kindergarten, these are this year's scores. I have no prior data for them, because this is their first year here. Um, this is excellent data, eighty one percent of our kindergarteners um, at or above grade level at the end of the year. That's what, absolutely wonderful. First grade, I looked at last year's data as well as this year's. Now, there was a slight decrease. Um, last year's data was eighty six percent, this year eighty three. Uh, you know, I'm happy that there's no red on either of those years, and that three percent difference, I'm not super concerned about. Our first grade team is outstanding, and the fact that two years in a row, they've had their kids, eighty percent of their students um at or above grade level is wonderful. Grade two, uh, I've seen a little bit of a decrease over the last three years. So they started three years ago, eighty two percent on, and then we went to seventy one, and now we're at sixty. So this is something that we definitely want to look at more closely, try to understand a little bit what's happening, what what makes that trend happen, and then we'll follow that trend into next year and set goals based on that trend as well. So that was just for the primary school, and the next slide shows some building level data for Turkey Hill and for the middle school. So Turkey Hill, over the last three years, we've seen increasing, right? We've definitely seen some increasing in the um amount of students on or above grade level, which is fantastic. Um, again, we've implemented a new curriculum. We've revamped our MTSS program a little bit. It's the second year of our iReady data testing, so students and teachers are more familiar with this, this platform and process. And I think our priority for this coming year, you know, these three grade levels have a lot of standards. The the leap from second to third grade in terms of what is cognitively required of our students in math is is large. So what we're gonna focus on in our summer work is looking at our scope and sequence, looking at our must-dos and can-dos, and really focusing in on the key areas where we still see gaps, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. Below is Lunenburg Middle School. Um, Lunenburg Middle School is one year behind in doing this diagnostic, so I've only got two years' worth of data here. This was really the first year of monitoring with a lot more fidelity than we have in the last few years. So our priority for math this coming year is to be looking at some high-quality curriculum materials and trying to align sixth, seventh, and eighth grade with a common math curriculum that's very um specific and and driven by the state requirements. And then again, um, Turkey Hill's cohort tracking, so grade three, grade four, and grade five, and what we've seen in terms of a trend um, and grade three definitely had an increase um, in green, decrease in red, which was great to see. Fourth grade again has some slight increases. So I know before there was that comment of minus twelve at fourth grade, and that's definitely something we need to dig into and under- and that's definitely something we need to dig into and understand. At the same time, I'm pleased by the fact that over the last three years, we are trending up. Um, and so that's gonna be important to look at. And grade five, again, slight increase in our students, um, at or above grade level. So we're trending in the right direction. And here's grade six, seven, and eight. Um, again, grade six, we're seeing some increases all three years in a row. Grade seven had a decrease last year at the end of the year, it was sixty-four percent on or above grade level, and we're at fifty-six percent right now, so that's something we definitely wanna look at. Um, and grade eight also slight decrease from, I think it was sixty to fifty-four, um, and an increase in red. So we certainly are hopeful that in choosing a new curriculum and aligning those standards, aligning our curriculum more closely, we can help push those numbers up.
Sure, we have a question.
Sure.
If you go back to the last line, this looks like the first place where we have double digits below. Is that right? So said grade seven and eight are the first double digits, three or more grade levels below? There's essentially like, uh, three hundred percent jump from sixth to seventh grade. There's three percent, and then there's ten percent. Why, why is that happening? Do we know?
Well, that's why we are analyzing the data, and we need to track it over several years to be sure, but as a middle school math teacher, I can tell you a couple of things. I think that as the students get farther along in the school year, the amount of conceptual and abstract thinking goes up. And I think one of the things that these particular sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students did not have was a conceptually-based math program K through five. So it's important to understand that, that they haven't been as trained in that conceptual thinking because of the program that they were using and being involved in. So I do think we're gonna see that change quite a bit. As far as that big jump, you know, there's probably a number of other factors, and that's why we need to dig farther into that data.
Some things we're taking into consideration too is, you know, as you get up into middle school, sometimes it becomes harder to have students be taking these assessments seriously. They have, you know, multiple weeks of MCAS testing, and then this follows that. So at this point, they're fatigued from some, from some testing, as are other grade levels. Um, but that is why, you know, some of the reasons, some of the ways we're trying to combat, um, students possibly not taking the test seriously is by sending home the the reports so that parents can discuss with their students, having teachers, um, conduct data chats with students, going over the data with teachers during Common Planning. Again, this is only the second full year that the middle school has given the iReady test, and specifically eighth grade not only took the test, what, these tests one week later than all the other grade levels, but it was following their DC trip. Um, it's just, it's a challenge because we're already assessing kids at a certain amount, and we don't wanna, you know, it's it's a balance there. Amy, you wanna explain the domains?
Sure. This is really where I'm focusing the most in terms of the the next school year in looking at the primary school as a whole. Um, looking at the four different domains of math, you know, number and operations, algebraic thinking, measurement and data, and geometry. Uh, what tends to happen in a scope and sequence is measurement, data, and geometry come at the end of a scope and sequence. So I usually expect to see those as domains that might not score as highly, because sometimes we run out of time at the end of the year, we do those a little more quickly. And looking at the primary school, the lowest performing domain was algebraic thinking. So this is very critical and important to me, and what we're gonna focus on at the primary school next year with all teachers is looking at the modules of the curriculum that really target this domain, and see what we can do to strengthen those modules and provide more time on those modules and and, um, some more explicit practice of those concepts. So that's how I'm using these reports. Um, and we'll do that obviously for all three buildings has one. As far as looking at a sample teacher, you know, I look at a sample teacher, I really don't think of the person, I think of the classroom, because the classroom is a a very big component, more than just the teacher, it's culture, it's everything else. A sample teacher, I would look at, okay, what did, what did this classroom, how did this classroom perform overall? So when I look at this classroom, sixty-two percent on or above, um, grade level, that's good, because we think about, we wanted them to move halfway to eighty percent, bring that cohort halfway to eighty percent. So this classroom met that goal. They moved halfway to the eighty percent, and now next year's teachers take this group of kids and move them the rest of the way. I'll look at the priority domain for this particular class as well. Um, so that I can meet with the teacher and work with the teacher on, okay, let's look at these particular modules, what can we do in terms of your group of kids to strengthen those modules and strengthen the instruction, uh, the support, and whatever else needs to be happening? In addition to that, if you go to the next, um, we're also gonna look at growth, and what is the growth percentage? So you see that overall as a district, the median typical growth percentage was a hundred and thirty-eight percent, the grade level as a whole, a hundred and thirty-one percent. Now I'm gonna look at this particular classroom, and how did these two classes perform? Both of these classes performed at approximately the same rate. So hundred and thirty-eight percent growth for one, hundred and thirty percent growth for another. I like seeing numbers above a hundred percent because that shows gap closing. A hundred percent is kind of where you need to be, right? Bring a kid from the beginning of the grade level to the end. But once you go above that hundred percent, now you're closing some gaps. I also like seeing that eighty-two percent of each of the classes met the typical expected growth, and that eighty-nine and ninety-three percent met their stretch growth, which is outstanding. Um, and then students with improved placement, I also really like it at grade level as a whole. Eighty-five percent of our students improved their placement. Maybe it was, I don't know what grade this is, but maybe it was from, I don't know, fourth grade to fifth grade, right? Eighty-five percent of those kids as a grade level improved their placement. Now we have ninety-one percent of each of these classes improving their placement. I'm also gonna look at, um, the number of students with zero percent growth, because those tend to fall into a couple of categories. Sometimes there are students who don't make growth, are kids who really, really struggle, who have a lot of other things that are getting in the way of them making progress. Sometimes our kids without growth came in at mid or above grade level and end at mid or above grade level, and that's important that we try to push those kids farther along and really challenge them. So lowest growth percentage for this particular classroom was thirty-eight percent, which is great. No students had zero percent growth, and thirty-six out of the forty-four were above a hundred percent growth. In addition to looking at it as, at the classroom, um, I'm also looking at it in terms of students. So, um, I'm doing for each grade level a list of kids who I really feel like we need to, right out of the gate next year, be making sure we have our arms around those kids, we're monitoring them, and we're following them. So that's another deeper level of data dive that we're doing into the kids and really track student growth as well.
All right, we're gonna proceed to go over some of the reading data and Amy's, um, sample pages. Also, um, we use those types of analyses for reading as well, but we, we didn't wanna make the presentation too long, so we just showed you some samples, plus we're keeping information confidential. Um, so on the whole in reading, as a district, we're seventy-one percent above, uh, or on grade level. Looking at this is the average of the primary school data this year, um, and again, this is tracking, you, you see the primary school, this would be tracking the the whole school each year. So currently, um, we're at over eighty percent. This is the chart we had showed you before with math. So again, this is looking at the grade level across, and you can see that, um, we have multiple grade levels already at the eighty percent or above, and others working towards that. Um, majority black in terms of the the percent changes from winter, from spring twenty twenty-two, and from that cohort before. But again, if I'm looking at, you know, second grade, I'm looking at where did second grade have kids in the winter, where were the second grade kids who are now in third last spring? Um, where were the second grade kids who are now in fourth two years ago? So the performance of typical second grade, then I look at the cohort from last year, if I'm looking at second, I'm looking at when they were in first grade in the spring of twenty twenty-two, they had seventy percent, eight percent on or above. So that's a little bit of a a decrease. Um, again, first year with a new curriculum. Everybody's a rookie, we like to say. Um, we, we are giving some grace for that, but certainly, we've seen some great growth as well, so, um, again, adjustments to practice based on this data, which is only one measure. We also collect the module assessment data from HMH at each grade level, so we can take a look, and we asked the teachers to take a look in the spring. Okay, look down your roster. Which kids do you feel performed as you thought they would on iReady? Which kids were off? And if, you know, there's a student who was two grade levels below, but you didn't feel like you were seeing that in the classroom all year, all right, let's look at some other data that you have. What could have been the barriers to them on iReady, or, oh, wait, maybe I realized, hey, they aren't doing so well. Um, and what are their barriers in general? We, we meet in SST and go over the whole child, where we consider medical factors, we consider mental health factors, we consider social, emotional, so we, we take a look at the whole picture there. Now, this data is tracking the cohort, so because kindergarten have only been in the school one year, we just have the one-year data. This data from twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three shows our current grade one, and then where they were in kindergarten below it, and then grade two, where they were in first and kindergarten. Uh, some of our we're taking a look at where we see increases and decreases on the whole. Then these are Turkey Hill and Lunenburg Middle School data overall. Good to see increases in the green and decreases in the red, that's what we're looking for as we move forward. And we are going to, um, continue to adjust ELA instruction according to, you know, these scores, and as I mentioned, other data that we look at. At the middle school, we already purchased a new ELA curriculum, will be in our first year of implementation there, making that a priority, um, for teachers and coaches. Can look at the data across the cohorts from grades three, four, and five. Again, good to see the increases, concern when we see any decreases, so we'll take a closer look there and continue to track that moving forward. Also, taking it into consideration the cohort of students that they're dealing with. And then the middle school. Grade eight, we don't have a third-year data since they would have been, um, in sixth grade, and they did not take iReady that year. So we wanted to go over some of the factors that impact achievement in general. Of course, dedicated educators, we this, this year was unbelievable for particularly the K through five teachers who were implementing either the ELA curriculum, the math curriculum, or both. Um, the tier one instruction is, is priceless. We value the fact that we have new, high-quality curriculums, and we can be confident that those are grade-level materials, that they're rigorous for a reason, and, um, that we're providing our students with, um, appropriate materials across the board. We are fine-tuning regularly our multi-tiered systems of support, so the tier one instruction that every student gets, the tier two instruction that's, um, extra help, whether it be in the classroom, in title one, um, or during intervention time, and then the tier three instruction, which is specially designed. Connected to that are the interventions provided by teachers and support staff. Um, social, emotional learning certainly impacts achievement, and again, as I mentioned, we're looking at the whole child to see what kind of barriers in the social, emotional realm might be, um, impacting academics. We are lucky to have coaches in ELA math and now in co-teaching. Um, we recently added Megan Wheeler, so all three of our coaches will be working with teachers next year during Common Planning time, which is also, um, impactful, and we we have now prioritized Common Planning time so that classroom educators, special educators, um, specialists if need be, the coaches can all attend at the same time, so everybody's on the same page. Any questions there before I move on to the next topic? All right.
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, um, the next thing we, we just wanted to introduce, uh, at this meeting is that we're revising our standards-based report cards in grades K through five, and I'm giving you a, a small snapshot at, this isn't exactly what the report card is going to look like, but this is um, what you might see for some of the language. So there are a lot of language art standards. Um, we combine some of them, you'll see RL one and R I one at the top are the same standard, ask and answers questions about key details in a text. It would only depend on if you were reading literature, or if you were reading an informational text. So the teachers will, um, will mark a student, give them a, a four, a three, a two, a one, um, possibly a one P or a two P in those categories. Why we wanted to revise is because we want the language of the standards to be the focus. Teachers are responsible for teaching the language, the, the, these standards. They are responsible for evaluating students on these standards, so we didn't want there to be any question. What we're working on is making sure there aren't a crazy amount of standards. So for example, you might see, um, an RL, you know, six, and there might be underneath it six A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, where you're not gonna see the A through G on a report card. They, they're gonna, um, combine that into just one standard. And we're also planning to do a short introduction to the new standards-based report card to show people where these standards are coming from, if they're not aware, how to read it, just kinda do a one-pager guide that will go with it. What we're also doing is you see the term one, term two, we'll have all four terms going across, and we will mark in each area if a standard was not assessed that term, which is very typical for especially, um, a-actually in both subjects. We, we might not talk about a particular math concept or ELA concept, that term, so we're not gonna give them a mark on it, and you might see it. Yes, we're assessing it in term two, and then again in term four, some will be assessed all four, um, terms. So you'll see the NAs or whatever, um, mark that we come up with to put in. And here's a sample in math, what that might look like. The, these are, um, the grade one, some of the grade one math standards that will be adding to their focus.
Um, we have a question.
So I think that this is great, that parents are going to see this level of detail. It's been a little while since I had a kid in the fifth grade, and I don't specifically recall what was in there. And I, I applaud the line, alignment with standards. I- if I were a parent looking at this and I saw, you know, that my kid is having problems, and I'm just picking randomly here, um, you know, understanding subtraction as an unknown addend bro, addend problem, I don't know what that means. I need to go back to this grade level. Are there, are there resources for parents that are connected to some of these standards, such that if I were a parent who said, oh, I see that my kid is deficient in this particular area, we're gonna spend five minutes after dinner working on this kind of thing? Are there clear paths for parents to be able to access those resources?
So within HMH, because we're working on certain standards within a module, um, there are definitely family resources there. iReady is also another resource, and this is where um, a student is on a personalized path with iReady, but a teacher can also say, oh, you need some more help telling time. Let me assign to you through iReady that lesson, or let me, you know, we have practice and homework journals in math. I might assign a particular skill to a student, um, during intervention time, and and will continue to and improve our communication with families about what standards are being covered in a particular unit, so that if they are interested in practicing at home, they can. But I think this helps clarify too, you know, you might have a student who is a strong student in, in math. But I think this helps clarify too, you know, you might have a student who is a strong student in, in math, but is struggling with a few of these standards. And I think that's important for parents to understand and not just have the math skills or the ELA skills all be lumped into one category. Plus it helps us when teachers are there, we're expecting them to be so focused on teaching these standards that we also, we don't want to deviate from that when they're assessing.
And also, you know, in math, the, um, we've been sending home these homeschool connection letters for each module. And within those, you will find games, videos to watch, all kinds of resources, sometimes books, different activities. And I actually am going to steal the idea of putting in the standards that we're covering and add those into those letters. So parents can see that as well.
Yeah, and I, you know, just speaking from experience, and this is something we'll talk about, I imagine later today when we talk about engagement. Is that there can be information overload and parents don't read everything. Um, and, and sometimes when there's a lot of detail, like a lot of detail in curriculum materials. It, it becomes difficult for an adult who is not acclimated to what's actually happening in that classroom to be able to focus in and find the right resource for the right thing. A report card is a significant event. Uh, probably more significant than the Friday newsletter. And as a result of that, I guess it's just my thinking that that should be something that we would want to focus around making sure that a real clear path, an easy path to resources relative to the content that's in that report card is very accessible for parents.
Absolutely. That, that is something that we're continuing to work on. I agree. Completely. And I, we have had feedback from parents, even just logging into HMH or logging onto Power School. Sometimes parents don't, they, they, they don't know how to do those things. So we'll continue to have drop-ins, we'll put, you know, information online. The, I know the school secretaries are always willing to walk a parent through and and we'll continue to consider ways that we can make it easier for parents to access these, these kind of practice materials or to understand what their child is learning.
It just a side note on, on this is this one's very similar to the report card that I used when I taught. And as long as we explain the standards and sent home a paper explaining as, as Tony would say, with the glossary that we always need to, to translate from education ease to parent language. We never had problems with people understanding the report card.
And I did collect sample report cuts from around the state in one of the networks that I'm in to take a look at those. Some were more simple than others, but these were all standards based examples. Um, Mrs. Prusowski.
Um, so are you writing this, this is going to be specific to Luna Burg and you're writing this specifically for us or is this?
These standards are the state standards.
They're the state standards, but the report cards.
But for the report card, as she said, that there would be some terms where standards would be grayed out or an NA because we're not it, we're not providing instruction in those standards on, in that term. So that is going to be very specific to us, our curriculum and sequence.
Going to be a Luna Burg specific report card though, okay.
It, it won't be any, you'll see all these standards being taught in any school in Massachusetts. That, that's what we're all responsible for. I won't be changing any of the lan- language.
Okay. And is it going to cover the behavioral things that are current report cards have as well, you know, the participation and that kind of.
I believe that part's staying the same, but go ahead, Mrs. Dr. Brown.
Yes, um, we, we were really just looking to tighten up the link between what we're teaching with the new curriculum and all those standards. And the report card language so that they are aligned. The teachers doing all of these assessments, I ready, HMH. They get data on each specific standard. It was really challenging for them this past year to have that specific information, but have a very broad and general report card. It got muddy as to, well, what are we lumping together to report on this? This move helps bring clarity for teachers. How they're reporting uh, progress for students and how they can talk with parents about it and connect it back explicitly connected back to the curriculum that we're working with.
We might want to do some zooms or info.
We've already talked about that in our next presentation. Those were some of the things that we talked about.
I think it's great. I think it's, as a parent looking at it, it's a lot more concrete as far as being able to distinctly say, okay, this is what we're having problems with, or this is what we're excelling at or this is what we need to work on. Um, and that probably translates in the classroom as well. So.
All right. Moving on to the middle school, I know I spoke before the school committee to get approval on purchasing the Amplify curriculum for grade six through eight. I wanted to give you just a quick peek into it. Um, at this point now we have received all of our paper materials. I'm sorting out those boxes and delivering them to teachers before they get started on their summer work that Dr. Burnham mentioned earlier. Um, we also, all teachers, special educators, coaches um, at the middle school and myself attended a full day training with Amplify where they walked us through some of these units. So um, we will have full digital access and there are anything we have on paper, we have digitally with this curriculum, which is the same with HMH. And then there are more materials available digitally than there are on paper in both curriculum. So I just wanted to give you just a quick peek into Amplify here. So in, I'm in grade six. And then looking at this first unit. You'll see the units are set up by subunits. For the students, um, there are all kinds of resources for teachers for planning. I wanted to show you what, uh, what the inside of a unit looks like here. So I come to this one. For example, I'm in lesson three. This is a, this is meant to be taught in one day. So I do want to point out that the pacing um, as was with HMH, the pacing with Amplify is, is very tight there. They tell us how many minutes we're supposed to dedicate to vocabulary activities to, um, you know, interpreting a text and teachers will need to stay close to that pacing. There's a little flexibility with days within a unit. Uh, but that's going to be one of the big challenges. One of the things, whoops, whoa, sorry. One of the things we really like about HMH, um, Amplify, sorry. Is that it's laid out, you'll see. So I'm in lesson three. Say this is day three. Um, I'm going to go right through one through nine here. So I'm going to start off with vocabulary activities. Those are at the start of every class. I'm going to move on to reviewing what's called solos. I'm going to show you. Um, the vocabulary activities are completed through an app for students. So it's a quick quick hit, but no, no photocopy packets or anything like that. Solos are what students would have done at the end of the class before or for homework. So we're reviewing that. But I, I want to show you how great it is for teachers. They have the instructional guides right here on the screen, um, that are basically scripted for them. Of course, it's going to be a lot of work for them to unpack these units and, and digest the text and get ready to teach it, but it is nice to have everything here. Students will be able to read the passages online, but we'll also have the paper versions. So you'll see that depending on what class a student is in. Students can annotate and markup these texts. So you see the yellow there I highlighted. They can make a note or make a copy of a text if they're moving it, you know, that portion into an essay they're writing. The teacher on the teacher end would be able to see what the student is doing. Um, okay, I'm in, now I'm in activity four, still working with the same text, but there are online activities that the kids can do. So here I'm still working with that same portion of text. All right, what did the, what does the character look like? What does she say? What does she do? Write a sentence to explain your answer. They can complete these activities on screen or the the journals could be given out, the paper version. Um, when we're getting ready to write, I now have my text that is all marked up so that I can use, you know, my markups and such in my writing. There's a portion of class where kids share, they, they highly recommend not skipping this part. They, they say this is one of the most influential portions of their units, um, with the sentence starters here to help kids converse about the specific text. Um, you'll see kids either doing the wrap up or the exit ticket tick typically pick, picking one of these two. And then we're moving on to the solo, which I mentioned before. These you'll, you'll see most middle schoolers have assigned for, for homework or to be completed during intervention time. And you see across the bottom of the screen here, there are multiple activities for each text that could be assigned. Again, students could be completing them on the screen or, um, you may see them assigned in print since the, the journals come right with this. And then there's the challenge writing portion that, um, could be assigned to a student who is in need of a challenge. Um, if I go back to so that's just a daily lesson within each grade level. There are the core units and then six G beginning story writing, the grammar activities, those are, uh, meant to be inserted on the, the flex days that appear in the scope and sequence. And then down below, there are some, also some flexible units that we may use in the future. So we're going to start with mapping out a scope and sequence for the year. So for sixth grade, I would be mapping out unit six A through six F. And then we'll, we'll go from there. Teachers are going to work over the summer on unpacking A and B with us. That's just a quick overview. Um, I could go on and on about Amplify if, if I go into you know, some of these programs and apps, I'll just give you a quick peek at the library. Digital library. This is uh, obviously digital, but students have this fantastic resource of texts that they can download onto their own computer. So if they want to read Ella Enchanted, they can download that and have the digital text. They could download it, you know, they could open it on their phone and read it. If we decide that we want to purchase certain novels and class sets, we will do so as well. But I, I am excited about the the prospect of this library being included in our curriculum. You see how many texts are available here. Any questions on Amplify? I mentioned before some of the apps, this is the, the programs and app section. Um, you'll see the vocabulary app that students are going to use here. And then there are specific apps that, um, are part of, you know, sometimes the solos, sometimes part of a particular unit at a grade level. We've been really happy with it so far, but of course we're just beginning.
That's a lot of work to get where you are. We thank you very much for that. It looks very intriguing.
You're welcome. And then, um, there are a number of slides here. I'm going to go through quickly. We attended a two day playful learning institute. As a district, there were seventeen of us who attended. Many of the teachers from grades K through two, um, the coaches and administrators as well attended. And we talked about the pedagogy of play, um, how it supports learning. How the, oops, the play mindset, um, is important and central to playful learning. I know we've had some questions about, you know, the amount of recess time and such. And we learned and talked about how play is a continuum. So something like unstructured outdoor recess time is at one end of the continuum. And then there, you know, it gets more and more structured as you go along, but talking about ways to incorporate play into our current curriculum in ELA, uh, math, sciences, social studies. They, um, taught us all about how play, um, what it feels like, what it looks like, more than just you know, that it's fun, but what it can help students do. For example, empowering learners to lead their own learning. Building a culture of collaborative learning, promoting experimentation and risk-taking. Encouraging imaginative thinking. Welcoming all emotions generated through play. And then we, um, honed in on specific playful learning practices that we all learned and that we can take away. So what our teachers are doing is they're starting with a manageable action plan, which includes adding, um, multiple playful learning practices into our scope and sequence for the first year. Um, and then we're going to, we're going to expand from there. But something like a center or a studio, depending on what grade level you're in, um, it, it's like a station activity where you might see, okay, we're working on erosion in the second grade. And I'm going to have four or five stations, one of them being a building station that deals with erosion. One of them being an art station that works with erosion. One of them being a writing station, one of them research. So it's, it's all connected back to the actual curriculum, but it allows them to incorporate play using things like clay, Legos, um, artistic materials. We explored the storytelling and story acting, um, learning practice where kids actually articulate a story to their teacher, which is, you know, one or one page or shorter. And then the class, um, takes a few minutes to act it out and how that empowers students and then their writing and then their, their confidence. The institute also gave us a huge amount of materials, things we can make into templates, things we can use as examples and, and things we can use to run PD in our district for people who didn't come to the institute as well. And that was it. Any questions on?
Any question? I see no questions from the crowd. You must have explained it very well. That looks great.
Thank you.
Seeing as I don't see any questions, thank you very much for the time and effort put into all of this. Um, we very much appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, next we have the Family School Partnership Initiative Report.
So as you know, we were accepted into this Family School Partnership Initiative Program uh, that Desi was running. Um, we participated, uh, from November through early June and this evening, um, you'll see on the screen some folks who have, have been part of that team for our district doing this work for these last many months. And, um, they're going to give you an overview of, um, our experience and our, uh, evolution of thinking on things and some of the things that through our conversations with our coaches through this process as well as some really honest conversation amongst the team members. Uh, and we did have a parent on this team as well. Um, we, we started to get a lot of insight, I think. Um, so Meredith Weiss served as a co-chair for our team. She did a phenomenal job. Um, and the team before you now, I'm going to turn it over. Meredith, you should be able to screen share the slides. Okay, so I'll turn it over to the team.
All right, am I, okay, I'm sharing. Perfect. All righty. So here we go. Thank you guys. It's my pleasure to be here to present our year long work. We have a few, um, few slides to go over. Thank you for being with us. So the first thing we have here is a little overview of the partnership that we have with School and Main Institute and Desi working together for the opportunities. This was really, uh, part of the fundamentals was the beginning, the foundation of the work that we did. And the fundamentals listed across the bottom are what were guiding our work throughout this year.
Meredith, I'm going to interrupt you because we're seeing the cover slide.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay, let me try this. Is this? Is it changing now?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, it's still working, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, very good. All right. So the five fundamentals, the first one was building positive relationships. These five fundamentals had twenty-three indicators on multiple pages of rubrics. So I'm just going to give you a summary of what each of these fundamentals basically included. So the building positive relationships included intentional intentionality and creating a safe and welcoming environment for all stakeholders. The intentional building and sustaining of trusting relationships and using multiple reciprocal balanced communication paths. That's what we were looking at for building positive relationships. When we talk about promoting family wellbeing, we're looking at including partnering with community groups, connecting to resources and having school as the hub of community life and ensuring accessibility to programming. Promoting pathways for partnerships with families included enhancing the understanding. Yes, including the understanding of how school and districts operate, sharing power and decision making. Decisions to advocate for children and civic response advocacy, partnering with college and career and developing family leadership. In the area of supporting child and youth development and learning, we were looking at items like data to inform decision making, linking work to standards for college and career readiness, collaborative development of opportunities and stakeholder voice and decisions. And then in the building capacity of staff, that included prioritizing family engagement PD, culture that promotes the importance of building relationships, partnering with community and cultural organizations, collecting, using, sharing family feedback to collaboratively plan capacity building. So our partnership was with the School and Main Institute. Those were our coaches and our guides throughout the process. As the superintendent mentioned, the program was from November until we just wrapped up a couple of weeks ago. We had facilitated meetings, independent meetings, cross district meetings. We had a composition of ten member team that covered the lenses of special education, English learners, curriculum, social, emotional and counseling. Of course, Superintendent Burnham was on our committee. We had Annika Scott, Juliana Hanscom. In our administration, we had John Palumbo. And then we had campus staff, Stephanie Miller, Mike Smith, Brenda Rolfe. And in community, we had Patty McCarthy Gillette and our parent Mandy Gilman. So all of these people brought all of these different voices from many aspects of our district. The meetings were largely sixty to ninety minutes each, and we began with an introductory meeting with the School and Main Institute in November. Then we had our first of three cross district meetings. Throughout the year, those were followed by facilitated meetings and independent meetings. And they were presented to larger audiences on two different district dialogues with additional district staff, parents and community stakeholders. And then we also had focus groups where we had discussions with caregivers, staff and students. That's where we started. I'm going to pass this over to Juliana to talk about ways we engage with families before the process began.
And so we had early brainstorming sessions that were held during the facilitated and independent meetings. And and the purpose were of them was to find strengths and areas to make improvements. And we found many ways that we engage in families. And this did take, you can see the list there, and it was all of us adding in our comments and then consolidating and then trying to get those lists. So you can just look through right now and see all of the ways that we found that we already do engage with families and that we consider strengths. And then from there, what we had said is we do great with engagement with all of the 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 bullet points we just seen saw it, but we wanted to shift our in our thought process from just simple engagement to a broader partnership where we would really involve the community collaboration, family leadership and everyone's voices to really make more effective changes. Rather than just engaging, we wanted to move to that true partnership model. And now Meredith.
Yeah, speaking of hearing off from all the voices, we we, when I say we, it was actually the School and Main Institute who held these focus group meetings. We made the arrangements for them to happen, but they held them so the parents and all the different groups could have honest feedback for how our partnership was working for them. And these were some of the themes that emerged from each of those groups. And you can see that some of them repeated themselves in different groups. So communication was one that popped up in a couple of areas. And those groups were reporting generally some inconsistencies in communication. That was a concern for them. In the area of relationships, the grade five to seven students were reporting positively. While the eight through twelve students were feeling more of a need for accessible, safe space to connect with peers and staff. In the area of teaching and learning, that came up with both the parent caregivers as well as staff. And what that we were receiving back in feedback was the virtual learning made some of the teaching and learning easier with the staff, but it was also isolating. And then there were some inconsistent expectations across grade level buildings. And the caregivers would like to better understand what the child is learning. And they reported disconnect regarding homework and the ability to help their support their learning at home, which we heard brought up in the last presentation. There was also one that was surprising to us, and that was the safety from the students. We really want to take those voices seriously, and we are listening to what they're saying in terms of making sure they have spaces where they can talk to staff and reach out and share their concerns. And then with the staff, fear came up. And that was concerning when you got word fear. And that was really driven by the social media concerns and community perception, because perception can be someone's reality. And that was a concern for staff. And that's what we were hearing from our focus groups. Now, after that, we had our priorities emerging. We're listening to all of this feedback, considering the foundations. And I'm going to hand this over to Stephanie Miller, School Adjustment Counselor, to talk about one of our priorities.
Thank you, Meredith. So I would like to talk a little bit about our district team priority number one, which is focusing on building relationships with all stakeholders that are involved in this project. Like Juliana said, we do want to move from a model of engagement to partnership. So rather than just sending families information, we do really want to help them become, you know, meaningful partners in their in their students' education. So this was one of the priorities after we revisited the fundamentals from this Family School Partnership Initiative and our reflections and our stakeholder feedback that we are going to continue to work upon. So I see it. Sorry, Meredith, it was small on my screen, but I can see it now. So our district team priority, like I said, is building relationships with all stakeholders. So this means building relationships between students to students, building relationships between staff to students, staff to families, et cetera. We really want to help build relationships and communication with everybody involved in this process. And one of the reasons why we did choose to pick this priority is because it does tie really nicely into our district strategic action plan. It really does support our strategy to cultivate culture and climate. So we want to make sure that we are, you know, communicating with families in a way that feels meaningful to them. We want to make sure that we're building these relationships where the families can have trust in us and we can have trust in them and help them engage more in their students' education. So like I said, not just sending them information, but really fostering that climate of, you know, safety, respect and mutual communication. So our hope is that by focusing on this priority, we can work on those areas and also, you know, strengthen our preexisting goals within our strategic action plan. And I will hand it over to Michael. Michael, if you wanted to introduce yourself too.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'm Michael Smith, fifth grade teacher at Turkey Hill. Meredith, thank you for driving this. Dr. Burnham, thanks for having us. So the district team's priority two was really to develop and define our partnership expectations with all stakeholder groups, students, staff and families. And ultimately, our goal here was to go from identifying an area of need to developing a document that will clearly articulate those expectations for all stakeholder groups. And me as a classroom teacher, clear and high expectations is what drives my students' success. So if we could do that for not just the student role, but the parents and family role as well, as well as for us, clarifying expectations for all three stakeholders will allow all of us to move forward, knowing what each role is 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 doing for the best of the students. So again, this connects to our district strategic plan, really focusing on equity access and achievement for all students. And if we're able to clarify those expectations and move forward with that partnership, we can provide access to the curriculum and hopefully boost student achievement along the way. The prior, the third priority was to strengthen the school culture to create capacity for stronger partnerships. This one was a really tricky one for us throughout our collaborative process. We kept coming back to mindset and capacity and how well we're going to try to move teachers, staff and other people in the district to be able to help them understand the true need for this partnership and that engagement won't be sufficient anymore. So not only that capacity, but also that shift in mindset, we need to help teachers and staff to understand in order for us to make this shift. And again, matching to a district strategic plan, I was really transforming the teaching and learning, making sure that we have effective teams and effective teams have the skills that they need, the knowledge they need in order to communicate. So professional development is highlighted there. I think that's a key for us to drive staff capacity, not only helping them understand what they can be doing to engage families in a more of a partnership role, but also making sure that we help them understand why. Why is this work important? What is the benefit to them and how we can make sure our entire school culture K to twelve can help those partnerships grow stronger, ultimately to boost student achievement. I think that, I think those priorities really took us some, took us some time to come up with, but that's where really where we narrowed it down.
All right, so our next steps, we still have the School and Main Institute available to us for any questions or support as we move forward. But we are moving forward on our own. We'll have members of our current district committees set up to solidate some actions. There's a summer working group that's being established where we can review the equity report, the academic data that was presented previously and working on drafting the compact of expectations that Michael spoke of. We're also going to be looking at the fiscal year twenty-four district goals, so we can reflect on those and the creation of the stakeholder group. Connecting the Family School Partnership and the Equity Audit Recommendations. We want to make sure we're including parents, staff, students and community members in all of our processes and advising on the issues of partnership and belong. So those are our goals of the stakeholder group that we're going to create. And that is all we have. I'll hand it back to Superintendent Burnham.
Turn it over to the chair for questions. Mr. Beardmore.
I have some comments and some questions. But first and foremost, thank you all for the work that you put into this. And thank you to Superintendent Burnham and your staff for pursuing this and and seeing it through. I think all of this work is good work that is going to help us make for a better educational institution. You know, I think, I think to a certain degree, this is an outcome of some banging on the desk that I did several months ago around communication and engagement and one of the things that I had in mind when I first raised this is, yes, I I think that there are some communication issues, and I think that some of those issues have been identified. And and hopefully there will be outcomes as a result of this that will make us more effective communicators and help us to build, to to move from engagement to partnership with families, just just exactly as as you just have discussed here tonight. I think there's a missing component here, though, that was something that I was driving to, and I'd be curious for your commentary on it, which is community building. And so the way I interpret what you've just presented is in the technology world, we would call this point to multi-point, meaning it's the school and the institution and the staff and the family and the student. But that does not necessarily account for building activism and activity and volunteerism and presence at school events and those kinds of things that would foster community that is multi-point to multi-point, meaning family to family, parent to parent, parent to other family's child, that that sort of communication and community building. And and I, you know, frankly, having been the guy who's been around here for a very long time, you know, that is something that I think we've lost in Lunenburg to a certain degree. And and I'm curious if that was discussed or looked at through that lens.
So these final three priorities, and I guess final isn't really the correct word, because this is an ongoing process and and a living entity that's just in its beginning stages. Those three parties are the ones that rose to the surface the quickest, the strongest, the ones that had the most actionable items. But I also want to point out that they're within the building capacity of staff. They specifically call out in those indicators. Like I said, there were twenty-three indicators amongst all of that. They included partnerships with community and cultural organizations. So there are other pieces that we haven't gotten to yet. And I want to emphasize that word yet, because these three parties were only three amongst many things that were discussed during this year. But these are the three that we're moving forward on. I completely agree and acknowledge that the community piece is is huge. It's a, it is a part of our partnership. We partner with the the community as well, because parents are community. We are part of the community, the school community, it's Lunenburg community. And I acknowledge that.
I'll jump in here too. I think that what emerged with these three are sort of the foundation that we need to establish in order to build to what Mr. Beardmore is talking about. Having clear expectations, defined what parents can expect of us as the educators. They understand clearly what we need from them in partnership in educating their their student. The kids are clear about what their role is in their own education. And of course, that's going to look different at each level. That's going to go a long way also toward building the trust that they talked about throughout our time with with the facilitators. When you build the trust and the relationship really takes hold, then you are more likely to see people coming together volunteering, because they have a connection with you. They want to be able to support you. And likely we'll see an uptick in that engagement element of things. Plus, shifting the mindset for teachers around what this all means and what does it look like and what's my role in it. Again, foundational for setting the stage for us to move beyond. So this is this is a multi-year effort. And what we're saying is these are the three places that we would like to begin this work. And it's much like the strategy for continuous improvement. There are foundational things that are identified. The action priorities are there, but the actual action steps to address those priorities change with time as things continue to evolve. Change with time as things continue to evolve as we work to strengthen certain areas. So. These, this is just what we've identified for, for the beginning of this work over the next handful of years. Anybody else from the team want to offer a comment?
Um, I will comment just to say that I do agree with what you said, Dr. Burnham. Um, I know that we did have a lot of discussions about the foundational. Aspect of a lot of the work. Um, and I do hope that once we lay the groundwork for, like you said, what's teachers' roles, what's our role, what's families' roles, then we can move forward. With what was just being discussed.
Yeah, I, I, I have to say, I, I worry that that may be a bridge to, a- and I totally get. The foundational model here, like I get it. Um, but I just worry that. That may be a bridge too far or too far out or, you know, and it, and it becomes beyond. Beyond the rem, the realm of the practical when you were focusing all of these efforts around the foundation. That we're not taking what could be rather tactical steps. To accomplish some things that could really be productive in terms of community building and, and. A- again, I, I need to absorb this a little bit more and probably comment on it some more. Later, but, and, and again, I, I, I'm not saying any of this to criticize the work that you've done. Um, and, and I tend to want to lean forward in the saddle as everybody knows and, and. And move probably faster than we can. Um, but. But I, I do view, I do view this community building. As an essential part of our success. Particularly when it comes to some of these safety issues, quite frankly, and some of the indicators that we've had around. Students who don't, you know, who, who find that, you know, that they don't have a trusted adult in the school and those kinds of indicators. As family leaders emerge, as, as there becomes a more robust community. Then those mentors and those uh, those folks that, that students can look to as examples. That they may want to aspire to, um, become a really important element. Uh, to the overall development of individual students. And I referred back to this last summer. Um, during my appointment meeting, you know, I recall very. Prominent families in Lunenburg. Um, that you could always count on and that knew all the kids. Um, and, and those relationships for me. Um, are still there today. Um, you know, Ray Powell, Dave Rogers, the Nashes, the Membrinos, the, you know, a- a- and they were. As it turns out, they were mostly sports and athletic oriented activities. And I think that that's probably an important thing that we haven't talked about much tonight or, you know, things that we can rally around. Um, the, those examples of engagement that was done early in the process here, I think are true. But I would argue that while they exist, our engagement and communication. And, and sustenance around those could be a lot better in some, in some cases. Um, so anyway, it's food for thought, um, and, and again, don't take this as criticism. I want us to move. Forward, um. Robustly.
And I, I don't take any of that as criticism at all because when you mentioned the realm of possibility and. Reaching out to community and, and further. If that was beyond, I was in my classroom, my office, having all these thoughts about what. We could do, and then I found a group of nine others that formed a team this year. And they were all thinking the same thing I was thinking. And now we're joined together to move forward. So I think the realm of possible is possible.
A- and I think ultimately what we're talking about. Is the culture shift. And that takes a little bit of time. Um, we have been working on, on some things, um, and, and you'll notice that on this slide. We talk about this group that will be formed and it's the equity. Focus with the partnership, it's the partnership and belonging. That are going to be in tandem as we, we do this work. So, um. I, I, I believe it will come.
This is Puzowski.
I got three things.
Okay, okay.
Thanks. Number one is, uh, thank you to the committee for all of this work because, um, a lot of work went into this. And uh, thank you guys very much. Um, I really appreciate this. Uh, number two is I definitely agree Peter's point about community. I think that's one of the strengths of our town. Um, I think we've lost a lot of it during COVID. I think we've lost it for other. Reasons. Also, we're fast growing, things are shifting, um, but I mean. Things like float, the sports intent, there's so many traditions we had. We've got a good community here. Um. And I think that building good community bridges and those connections, I think that leads into the mental wellness. And the health, and I think it leads into um, the bullying issue. Um, and I think it leads into student engagement and it ultimately leads back to the academics. Um, so I do want to emphasize the community building part of it, um, whether that's through volunteer stuff for parents or outside. Events or I'm not sure what, but definitely agree with Peter about the community thing. Um, and number three is I wanted to talk about the students in eighth and twelfth grade who said that safety was one of their focuses. Can you talk more about that?
Yeah, let me stop my share for a second and see if I can. Get back to this. Um, specifically to the students in eight through twelve. They had safety concerns around drugs and mental health issues, bullying, cultural ignorance. Sometimes they don't feel safe in school bathrooms or areas on school grounds. So that was specifically what was pulled out for us. Again, we didn't get to talk to these students individually. That was just what was reported from the group.
Okay, and it was a very small sample of students. We.
There were, there were nine in that group.
We were limited. Um, we were provided a number of parents, a number of students and we had to. Recruit, so again, it's a small sampling. But it's not inconsistent feedback with other things that we, we have heard, so. Okay. Concerning this things.
Okay, um, thank you very much for your presentation. This will be a topic that will come back up, I'm quite sure. I'm taking notes about school committee uh, goals as we're listening to your presentation. And um, we thank you, and thank you for the time and effort for them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, we have under all business. A discussion on the future of the Turkey Hill Elementary School. And I'll explain why this is on here. The idea is we are looking at, we presented a few meetings ago. All the. Um, physical, mechanical kind of things that need to be fixed to keep that building going. And it's a lot of money. It's, well, Peter's better than I am at this, but I think between twelve and fourteen million dollars. If we put everything we need to into that building to keep it going. Um, there's a lot of laziness about, you know, if you take money from the. MSBA, then you have to keep it as a school building for ten years following the taking of that money. There's all kinds of things like that. So in looking at how are we going to fund this and what needs to be funded? It makes sense to figure out. What are we going to do if we get to a point where we build another building? And we no longer need the Turkey Hill Elementary School? What happens to it? Do we? I think the main two things thoughts are, we are to give it back to the town for community use. Or we tear it down and maybe use it, the space for a field or something. Now that's a town decision, it's not really our decision here, but. Over the summer, we would like to have townspeople opinions on this. So we know how much money we will have to eventually. Put in to the maintenance and, and restoration of this building. And if we decide that it's going to be a school building for fifty years, that's major renovation. So. So we have to have. In our minds. What we think, what is our opinion as to the end game of that building? Now, from the people who were present at that conversation, did I present that correctly?
I think you did. I think that. And so just for the, for the benefit of context for people here maybe watching at home, um. Chair and superintendent and I and Mr. Cassidy had a meeting with uh, with the chairman of the select board. Few weeks ago, um, following the meeting that we had here a month ago, uh, to talk about. Turkey Hill. And. This really has to do with how we facilitate funding. The scenarios that we talked about, if we want to do, uh, you know, kick the can scenario versus a bike to bullet scenario and. Those kinds of things. And. One of the, and the issue that Mr. Jeffries raised to us is that. As the town is being asked to make decisions that relate to a strategy, like where are we going to spend our money? Ritter, Town Hall, TCP, Turkey Hill. And what are going to be the long-term visions for these buildings? That could ultimately affect what scenario we follow and what money goes where and from where. So for example. There's a, we seem to be on a path right now that TC Passios would operate as. Transition space and that we're putting money into the front of the building, perhaps during that process or behind or ahead of that process. So that TC Passios can operate for a period of time. Ten years or a hundred years, perhaps as a community center, continue to utilize the gym, continue to utilize the cafeteria. Uh, the, the, uh. The, the commercial kitchen capabilities and, and whatnot. All that's well and good, but if the plan were to be to turn Turkey Hill. Into something along those lines with much greater capacity than the current footprint of, of TC Passios. Say ten or fifteen years down the road, then that would have some serious. Consider, that would lead to some serious considerations in terms of how we would go about dealing with Turkey Hill. Um, and whether we would want to sustain it for the long term. And turn it into a ten to fifteen year school, but probably a twenty, but perhaps a twenty-five. To fifty-year community slash office space, size meeting space or what have you. Um, versus tear it down and put a ball field or put a new school on that footprint or some other scenario. Um, and I think he challenges us some really good questions to which. We don't have answers for because I think, at least in my mind, my. Time horizon has been ten to fifteen years. It hasn't really been, you know, frankly, I don't want to consider. What happens in ten or fifteen years because I don't plan on being here, sitting here in ten or fifteen years. Um, but, but I think that. In reality, when we go and present. A strategy to the town, there needs to be some assumptions that we can fall back on and say. This is why we made the, we're making the recommendations that we're making uh, about spending on that building. Um, so hopefully that adds a li- a little bit more context. I think I just repeated everything you said, but. Um, so the question is, is how do we, how do we get to that opinion? Um, because I don't personally have one. Um, and I, I think that a conversation is in order and perhaps some information gathered.
Tony.
So, we talked about this the last time and. One of the things that I thought of, unfortunately after we left the meeting was. If we created a list of like. We were talking about priorities, instead of thinking of them as priorities to get the building. Up to whatever we want it to be, whether it's. A community center, whether it's a school, long-term, or whether we tear it down long-term. What if instead we just organize the priorities based on? Things that would be needed in either scenario or any of the scenarios where it remains a building. Obviously, if they're going to. Our plan is to tear it down and doesn't matter, but there has to be some things. That are maintenance or upgrade related in that building that we need to fix no matter what we do with. And so organizing it such that those have higher priority. Or, you know, adding a third factor, if, if we have like a list of things that are. Helpful universally as a building, but then there are things, and I think the one that I remember was the fire alarm system. Where like we don't have any, if it goes, there's no solution, right? Because the, there's no extra parts, we use new old parts.
Right, right.
That one might have to jump the list because it's both like a critical thing like today. And, you know, the catastrophic outcomes are so scary.
Right.
But once you get away from those like, you know, emergency red flag thing, then organize the rest of the list on. Items that would be useful regardless of what we do with the building, instead of trying to figure out now. What will happen in fifteen years? Because I, I just don't think, no matter how much backfining we do, no matter how much budgeting we do. Um, it doesn't seem like that's something that's. Feasible or possible, I mean, like, how long did it take to tear down the old primary school?
No, please.
I mean, like.
That's nineteen years.
To avoid.
Nineteen years.
By, by making some kind of a decision. So that the, the town makes, not.
It's not.
That before it is, um. What do they call it? Demolition by neglect. Before you get to that point. By making a decision, we're going to keep this building up just long enough. Till we have another school building. Oh, then we're going to tear it down. Okay. Well, then we're not going to do all that electrical work and the new roof and the, all that stuff. If we go that route, if the route the town takes is. When, when a new, if and when a new school is built. And it's not built on that footprint, pending it's not built on that footprint, which it probably wouldn't be, I wouldn't think, but. Who knows, you know, I won't be sitting here either. So, um, but. Then if the town decides they want to make that extended day, they want to make that. Um, the, the food pantry, they want to do all those things, then we need to take care of these other systems.
Yeah.
So it's, I think, I think the request from the. Chair of the select board was that we form some kind of opinion. As to what, not necessarily this board, but, but the town. Form some form of opinion as to what would happen should we leave that building. More?
I guess, um. I think we could start by making a list of our concrete needs. As far as, it's hard because right now we have a lot of stuff at Passios. And we don't know what's going to happen at Passios. So if Passios goes away or if Passios is retrofitted for other reasons or because we don't know. What's going to happen in other buildings, it's so hard for us to make plans.
There's a lot of, we don't know.
Because I can say, like, I know if Passios goes away, I. Turkey Hill would be an excellent place to move school offices and we have a lot of programs. That um, use that space at Passios. Um, and like Patty Gillette's programs and the, like, there's a lot of. In the ACES program, there's a lot of programs, like really great programs that need space. That would be great there, that like when we're planning, um. That sometimes I think when talking about like a new town hall or an addition, I'm not sure those programs are getting remembered. In planning.
In the municipal building plan?
Yeah.
If they. If they go with the hybrid model, everything is included except the early learning center.
Okay.
One way or another. Um, it's a change in the extended day programming, which makes a change in community gym tenant. Definitely, that's an issue there. But the school offices would be slated to Ritter. They, they have plans for all those things.
Okay.
But not the early learning center. There is no plan that I have seen that includes that.
Okay, what about the ACES program?
The ACE program would be included if they were.
So. I, I think we need to think of this in terms of time horizon. So when we think of the long term North Star. What happens after a decade from now with Turkey Hill? I, I think it's reasonable to assume that we will. Figure out. What we're doing with extended day or early, early learning or whatever. I, I, I don't think that we should be thinking of it in terms of. Tactical needs of the here and now. Those are issues we have to deal with, but we have to deal with. Through a separate discussion. But I, I do think that. There are. You know, a higher level or more general use things that, that we could be thoughtful about, given. The capacity of that building. Uh, and given the structural integrity. Of that building. It could be used for a number of different things, you know, um, and. And I, I think that that ought to be considered. There's one other thought, oh. When we talk about. This list of what, what we have to do and. But here's the reality. If we do nothing to that bill. It will probably still be standing in fifteen years from. I don't know. If the heating system will work. And to be honest with you, I don't even know if the roof will work. But everything else, the electric, probably still running. The water, probably still running, quality level with their act today, probably not, but running. You know, um, but here's the problem. We changed the HVAC in that building. We put a new roof on that building. We exceed the threshold for ADA and now we've got a big bill on our hands.
Yeah.
That, that exceeds the value of the critical repair that we have to make. And so if we are to invest in that building. We are probably going to need to make a very large investment. Um, and as a result of, I mean, the, the, the reality is, is as a result of that. Then we need to be thinking about, okay, well, what are the long term returns on that investment? Because. The, the expectation will probably be that that investment needs to return for more than a ten year period. And, and so tho- those are the. That's the push and pull that we're kind of dealing with right now.
My thought in all of this. Is that we need to. Get a basic feel. For what community would like. Eventually. But it's very hard because as Laura says. That you've got. The thing is you can't wait for the municipal building people to settle. Because. If that should settle the wrong way, we have to be ready to move with this. You know?
Are you looking for more of like a, a, a non-binding vote at a town meeting?
Um, we could do it that way, but we could probably easier on everybody's nerves. Do it with some form of survey that goes out. Just so the people, because, so the people have an idea. First off, we don't want that building. To turn into TC Passios. This is what we're trying to avoid.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to avoid the survey from the parents who might not go to town meetings and.
Yeah, this is true too. It's a good point there.
So I think we need to think about how we do this because it's not, it's not a clear path. It's not like we prefer email or Facebook. Right? It, it, this isn't a clear path, but it gives a need for some context. Um, you know, maybe it's, it's the form where we. Kind of lay down some baseline information then with the context of the question we're asking. And then solicit opinions from the people in the room. I mean, you know, because ultimately, all we really need to do. Is to be able to articulate, this is the basis of our thinking. Right? These are the assumptions we're making. Um, because ultimately, as we all know, we've been to town meeting once or twice, town meeting is pretty fickle. And you can even do a survey at a town meeting where one thing is indicated one year and then go and make a vote the next year and you get a different vote. So I'm not, I don't think that it would be reasonable to say that we are going to create a plan of record. For Turkey Hill. All I think we need to do is say, this is the reasoning around the recommendation.
I like the idea of a forum. We could zoom deal because you get more people. You know, if we say we're going to have a discussion about this, we'll get the same, well, people that go. Town meeting, you know, it. Can we do it? If you do it over Zoom, you might get more people. Like that would be a difficult conversation to moderate, for sure. But, um. But I think. It would at least present that this, this. There's a pathway here, we have to make a choice. And there are reasons for not wanting to spend fourteen million dollars in that building. And there are reasons to want to spend fourteen million dollars in that building. And that reason. You know, has a lot to do with what we're going to do.
I, I will say, I think the building worth saving. I think that. It was built to last a very long time. I think it's a good building. Um, I think that. We should do something. I just, I don't know what because it's so hard because. It, it's hard because I don't know what else is happening in this. I know they're working on it. I know.
So one other thought here, um, because some of the suggestions that Mr. Jeffries made and. It makes sense to me in terms of, you know, how we could potentially utilize the office space, the gym space, cafeteria space, the. Um, the facilities space.
Right, right.
The classrooms, like, there's really good creative ideas, but there's also quite a bit of overlap. With stuff that the municipal building committee is already planning for. Right? And I. Ron DeLicio brought up during public comment a month ago, you know, like. If we're going to spend eleven million dollars on the front end of TC Passios. Why would we go and then not spend that money on Turkey Hill when we can utilize the benefits of that ten years down the road? Or, and, and her point was. Spot on, like, and it was a, a bit of a revelation for me actually during, because I hadn't thought about it that way. But I think that that may be a conversation that ought to be had. With the municipal building committee, because that's the kind of critical questioning. And, and opinion that could easily develop in a town meeting that ought, ought to be explored in some detail. Uh, so maybe there's another, you know, maybe this is a.
Maybe there's another group we have to talk to first. Brian, any thoughts?
Uh, I can bring up the Turkey Hill again to the municipal design committee again to give the conversation. But I think that based off of that committee, it's like there is a need for space. So I don't see how Turkey Hill is not utilized. I think the town. Wants space. I think they, they don't like tearing down buildings. So I, I think it's likely that it wouldn't be a community center. But then why are we having two community centers do it at the same time? That's a little. Concerning.
And. By the way, my, my opinion is, is that. TC Passios could serve as an excellent community center for the next ten years, right? And we, but we could take the Matt Allison approach, which is find a bucket of paint, you know, kind of fix what you absolutely have to fix and, and nurse that building along. Without necessarily investing as much money as we may be looking, you know, so I, I think, but I think an open, honest. Discussion around that is probably in order relative to. This conversation on Turkey Hill.
And then my other concern that we haven't brought up yet was the, if. If we're doing these major renovations to Turkey Hill, we need a, a space for the students.
Right.
Because these long term projects are going to take up. Time that we're not going to have. When I have the students in the building, so.
Or do those long term, those long projects. Wait. I don't know.
And if we wait, are they going to get done?
Can't wait because then it doesn't get done and we have air conditioning at the primary school problems. You know, that's what happens when you don't spend the money. So. Anyway, so here we are. So. Do we think that the next stop on this parade is municipal building? Or do we think the next stop on this parade is a general forum?
I would agree with what Peter said, that I think a general forum makes more sense to with. TCP, maybe it's lasting another ten, fifteen years of.
Something.
Being maybe center and then Turkey takes over.
I would propose.
That's not a, I like that too.
I would propose a exploring book. And this is not like urgent, like it has to be done inside of the next two weeks or, or a month, but I do think we need to kind of get this. To a point of us having an opinion, maybe when school starts or slightly thereafter. But I, I think that we should probably reach back out to Mr. Jeffries around perhaps. Or perhaps you.
Not to the chair.
Right, yes, exactly, conveniently enough.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that, you know, coming up with this recommendation or opinion for us. I think their input and a discussion with them is probably would be helpful. And perhaps you could bring that to him or bring that to the committee. Um, and a forum, like I, I, this may be a. We, we may run this on two tracks. Before we're ready to.
Make some kind of. Decision on our part, what we think. But it's really going to be what does the town think in the long run? Absolutely. Um.
I wonder if it's something that we would make it up, not necessarily a vote, but maybe even a position paper on this is our position.
Oh, yeah.
Where we.
That's exactly what I envision.
But I, I wouldn't want to do that till we talk to other people. Yeah. So when your committee is not meeting.
There's no dates, right?
Like till the fall, right?
The municipal design committee isn't meeting for the fall?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't think they're meeting for quite a while. And I don't know. The wisdom of trying to gather people together in the summer to have a forum. If maybe the best thing to do is to take both of these ideas and. You go when they need, or I would still reach out to Mr. Jeffries and say. That the school committee is interested in what the municipal building committee thinks. About Turkey Hill.
Yeah, I, I, I think we should table this until perhaps our July meeting. And have some con- some additional conversations and kind of, oh, we're not meeting in July?
We don't have that scheduled, but we could.
Or, or August.
Usually we find some meeting during the summer when other people, when people aren't away.
Um.
So we could do that. We could table this until that time.
One, one thing that's kind of. Rattling around my head here is the calendar and not just the summer calendar, but the, the.
November town meeting.
Well, not so much November is so much as annual town meeting. So my expectation is, is that we're not going to get a. A decisive article. On municipal building committee. Work until springtime.
I think Mr. Jeffries was thinking.
Okay, well, i- if, if November is the case, then we've got a lot of work to do in a short period of time. So I'm, I'm just sensitive to the calendar.
All right, so why don't we put this on, we'll jump ahead, topics for future discussion. We'll put this on some summertime meeting that we managed to find time that the five of us are in town.
If he's thinking November, yeah, it's kind of. Like to meet sooner.
We'll, we'll see. And then should, should the municipal building committee meet prior to that, let us know. And we'll see what we can do, okay? Does that sound like a reasonable wrap up to this discussion? Right?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, reports. I have one that I already have gave, the master plan committee kickoff, um, the complete committee has not been appointed yet. The consultant groups were present at the meeting on fifteenth. And let us through a basic discussion of the needs and wants of Bloomberg. The biggest thing is the need for as many people as possible to complete the survey found on the town website. With paper copies available at town. So no additional meeting date has been set. And, um, did anybody else have a report, Brian?
Finance committee met on June eighth. Uh, the AC project, primary AC project was on the agenda. There was a public comment, um, stating, uh. The select board chair. Had mentioned in prior meetings about overheating and potential damage to the primary school. Um. Dave Passio stated that it was more of a climate control thing than it wasn't, uh, air, just air conditioning. Um, this, uh, finance committee said the process. Of. The AC project could have been approved, um, in the future. Um, there was a motion to support the plan. It was a two-two vote. Uh, Mr. Waters and Mr. Gray were in support. Uh, Mr. Waters had mentioned that the finance committee was an advisory and it was a non-binding vote. That they couldn't stop or enforce anything. The. Master planning member was voted in, uh, Mr. Waters. Uh, Mr. Gray was the municipal building design committee state on that. Mr. Menard is police and fire. Also capital planning. Mr. Gray was the school committee temporary, uh, as Caesar left. And Jay Simeone, library, he was absent. They were still waiting on the town manager for amendments, uh, but they're making progress. And there were five members soon to be down, four with Tom Bayliss leaving. And there was, this meeting tomorrow.
Well, the good news from the, uh, finance committee appointing people are. That we have a meeting on, um, next Tuesday and. Um, Mr. Menard has applied to the office term and there is one more individual. So it will be back to five, but it is still a seven person committee.
I did notice on the agenda for tomorrow, they did have the AC project again on it. I'm not sure. What they're doing with that.
Anybody else with a report?
Uh, the athletic advisory committee met, uh, last Monday, June twelfth. Thank you, Brian, for the handover and he also attended the meeting and I appreciate you doing so. That was a good first meeting for me. Um, the athletic director reported on the spring season. Uh, for which we had a number of very successful teams. Um, also noted that, um, there were. Some open positions, uh, for coaches specifically. Um, soccer and field hockey, and I think I read recently that a field hockey coach has been appointed. But, uh, he's working on hiring. Um. The, there were three fundraisers, uh, that were approved by the committee. Um, a. Raffle calendars for both field hockey and soccer. Um, there was a bit of a discussion because there was some. Concern last year of overlapping. Uh, similar fundraisers. And the committee resolved, uh, having gone through a year of calendar fundraisers. Um, that there was, where there was overlap that. The problems that were anticipated did not really manifest. And, um. It was determined that that would not. There wasn't an expectation that those would be an issue. The field hockey raffle will be, uh, September or October. The soccer raffle will be selling in September and, and running in October. And football will be running a, um. Scratch ticket raffle. Um, that will be occurring in October. Um, there are also some outside fundraisers. Um, the football, uh, boosters are looking at a late August cornhole tournament. Um. Track, uh, is looking at, uh, miles for miles, which is. Uh. Currently scheduled for October fifteenth. Um, and I also learned that homecoming will be Saturday, October twenty first.
October twenty first. Put it on your calendar.
It's already online.
Okay. All right. So. No other. And we have talked about topics for future discussion and I once again have jumped over. Public comment as I so frequently do at the end of the night. Is there anyone with public comment if you are in the public on the Zoom? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Then I guess we're okay with public comment. Then what I would like to do then is to adjourn to executive session. To discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect there too.
Make a motion to a chair, uh, to go into executive session and adjourn following that.
Second, second. All those in favor?